ISD Board of Trustees to order at 6:00 PM on October 2nd, 2025. The purpose of this pre-meeting briefing is to conduct a briefing session with the administrative staff regarding the posted agenda for the regular board meeting scheduled for 7:00 PM on October 2nd, 2025. For the record, the board members present are Ileana Garza-Rojas, Marjorie Barnes, Carolyn Benavides, Paul Gilmore, Randy Shackman, and Kim Brady. Cassandra Hatfield cannot be here tonight. The next item is Audience for Guests. Persons who wish to speak during Audience for Guests must have submitted an electronic form for this purpose prior to the 1:00 PM posted deadline. As of 1:00 PM today, there were no requests submitted. Item number three is Administrative Reports. Dr. Eldridge, are there any reports by administration?
Okay, our first item report from Dr. Robin Stout is concerning our purchase of new library books. And as you all know, with the new legislation, there is lots of information to be aware of for the library books. So, Robin, if you will explain what the item is.
Yes, thank you. For your consideration tonight is approval of our now monthly purchase of library books. The list in compliance with the new legislation was posted on September 20th, or I'm sorry, September 2nd, which is 31 days. The legislation says that the lists are posted 30 days prior to being voted on. The link is to the lists is on the Library Services website on CFB. And the next list will be posted, I believe, on Monday in accordance for the November board meeting. There is also a link posted for parents and/or community members to submit a question. There had been none from community members. The titles on that list are selected by certified librarians after consulting two or more peer-reviewed sources for positive review, two or more positive reviews from peer-reviewed sources, professional, industry, standard sources. After approval and purchase, those titles are also subject to a visual review by the Library Services processing staff prior to going on student shelves. They are also, the lists when submitted have been reviewed by Cindy Niedabitz, our Director of Library Services. We ordered last year approximately 18,000 titles, so those lists are going to continue every month through, every month that the board meets, through the end of the school year. And if you have any questions or anything to say?
Thank you, Dr. Stout. Board members, do you have any questions for Dr. Stout? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next report is Mr. Blackburn, and it is Item 5J, Considerate and Approved Construction Amendment Number Two for Construction Manager at Risk. So, with cross-selling construction. Mr. Blackburn, will you explain what, where the construction is going to take place and any other information that the board would like to know?
Good evening, Dr. Eldridge, Vice President Brady, members of the board. This is for a major renovation at Smith High School. It will include basically gutting the second floor. All the classrooms on the second floor will be fully renovated, most of the classrooms in the building, really. Restrooms will be refreshed, the cafeteria will be refreshed, include a gym refresh as well. There'll be ADA site improvements and security upgrades. This will not require portable classrooms at this campus. We're going to take roughly eight classrooms at a time and sort of hopscotch our way through the campus as we go through each phase. And we expect to be complete at the end of 2027. So it'll be, it'll take a little while, and we'll be touching a lot of the schools. So be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Board members, do you have any questions? Ms. Garza-Rojas?
Thank you for giving us that information. Can you tell me when it's expected to start, possibly? I know that construction is construction, right? But possibly a start, and then you said the end of 2027. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. We'd like to start probably after the Christmas break if we can get mobilized.
For 2026? This, I'm sorry, this year?
Yes, this year.
Okay, thank you.
Board members, any other questions for Mr. Blackburn? Thank you so much. Is that all, Dr. Eldridge? Item four, board members, do you have any questions regarding consent agenda items? Okay, seeing none. Board members, we have reached the end of our agenda for this pre-meeting briefing, and we are adjourned at 6:05 PM.
I call this regular meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees to order at 7:00 PM on October 20th, on October 2nd, 2025. Board members, district staff members, and members of the audience, you are free to join me in standing as John Hewlett from Valley Ranch Baptist Church provides a message, followed by the leading of the pledges by Randy Shackman, leading the US flag, leading the pledge to the US flag, and Eliana Garza Rojas, leading the pledge to the Texas flag.
Thank you so much. Will you pray with me? Heavenly Father, we praise you and thank you for who you are and for all you've done. We praise your name together tonight, and we thank you for this opportunity to be gathered together. We're so grateful for this wonderful community that you blessed us with, and all of the schools and families who are represented here. Thank you so much for each member of this school board and the way that they tirelessly serve to bless the families of this community. And we thank you so much for all of the educators and administrators throughout the district that serve so faithfully all of these families. And we pray for your wisdom. We know that there are decisions to be made that aren't easy, and we need your guidance. And so I pray for each member of the school board, that you would fill them with your wisdom, help them to know how they can best serve and love the children and families of this district. We pray also for all of the schools across our community. Pray that you would keep our children safe as they gather to learn. And we pray that you would give the teachers and the administrators peace and endurance. Don't let them be discouraged, but give them strength as they love and serve these students. And so we commit this meeting and all of the schools in our district to you in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hewlett, for a wonderful prayer. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for being here tonight in support of all of our kids. As a district, we dedicate our efforts and resources to our goal of high expectations for all. The board uses this goal to guide every deliberation, decision, and action. As elected trustees, the board is responsible for providing insight, setting the strategic direction of the district, and ensuring the accountability, all in service of student achievement. You will witness the board conducting its work in open session, except for specific items that may be discussed in closed session, as permitted under the Texas Government Code, Section 551, commonly known as the Open Meetings Law. These items typically involve personnel matters, consultation with our attorney, or real estate transactions. As we move through our agenda tonight, it's important to remember that we are in the business of supporting kids. With that in mind, we asked everyone present to be, to model respectful, responsible, and constructive behavior. This model is what we expect of our students. Board members present, Eliana Garza Rojas, Marjorie Barnes, Carolyn Benavides, Paul Gilmore, Randy Shackman, and myself, Kim Brady. Board President Cassandra Hatfield is not able to be here tonight. We constitute a quorum and may conduct business on behalf of the district. Before moving on to the next agenda item, I would like to remind you that the board will accept comments from citizens of the district and from district employees. Persons who wish to speak during Audience for Guests must have completed an online form for this purpose and submitted it electronically by the posted deadline of 1:00 PM today. When the board addresses Agenda Item Number Three, Audience for Guests, you will be invited to the podium to speak to the board. Next on the agenda is Item Two, Special Presentations and Recognitions. Ms. Rodriguez?
Good evening, Vice President Brady, Dr. Eldridge, and esteemed members of the board. Before we begin tonight's recognitions, if Dr. Eldridge and Vice President Brady can make their way down to the floor. Through our partnership with Chick-fil-A at Trinity Mills, we honor those who demonstrate excellence with the CFB Champion Award. This month, we are proud to honor Danny McCray with the Dallas Cowboys as our CFB Champion. As Youth Football Development Manager for the Cowboys, Danny partnered with CFB ISD to introduce Girls' Flag Football to our district. Through his leadership and support from the Dallas Cowboys Girls' Flag Football League, the program is fully funded and has empowered our high school student athletes to build skills, develop teamwork, and grow as leaders on and off of the field. Mr. McCray, if you would like to say a few words, you are more than welcome. Sure. Yeah, you can.
So I actually got the Youth Football Development Manager job back in May. And thankfully, I reached out to Carrollton Farmers Branch, not to Eldridge, and they were the first to take on the role. So since then, we've had over 160 schools playing rough flag across Southern Texas. Our elite team, Miss Valeria De Leon, right here. We've seen tremendous growth, but we've also seen what rough flag can do for the community and for the student body. I'm a former Dallas Cowboy player, played for the Bears as well. I know what football did for me, and we want to make sure that the young ladies have that same opportunity. So thank you all, and thank you as always.
We are so incredibly grateful for our partnership with the Dallas Cowboys and their commitment to supporting the next generation. So thank you so much, Danny McCray, for all that you do for our kids. And if, if, did we take a picture with the family also? Oh, okay. You're good. We took your picture, so thank you so much for being here today. All right, moving on to our student recognition. We are proud to recognize Ranchview High School senior Valeria De Leon for being nominated as the female pick by the Dallas Cowboys for the NFL Latino Youth Honors Award. This achievement celebrates Valeria both as a student and a standout Girls' Flag football player. During the 2024-25 season, she led Ranchview to the championship game of the inaugural Flag Football League and earned a spot on the first-ever Dallas Cowboys Elite Girls' Flag Football Team. Please join us in celebrating Valeria for her accomplishments and the inspiring example she sets for all. She had practice today! And that concludes tonight's recognitions.
That was amazing. Thank you very much. Congratulations to you. Next is Item 2B, the President's Report. On behalf of the board, I would like to express my extreme gratitude for the endless hard work of our staff, that our staff puts into our students. Between the Spanish Heritage Month activities and all of the homecoming events, we would like you to know that your intense effort does not go unnoticed. We are grateful to be able to show up and participate, but we can only imagine the amount of time and effort that went into making all these amazing events happen for kids. Thank you to our staff for investing in our students in and outside of the classroom. We'd also like to extend our congratulations to both Kent and Rosemead Elementarys for being recognized as the only two schools in Dallas County who were named Lone Star winners. Excellent work and well-deserved. It is National Principal Appreciation Month, so please thank a principal for all of their dedication and hard work they do for all of our children. We are blessed to have some of the very best in CFB ISD. Finally, I would like to express our appreciation for the fabulous partnership with MetroCo Services. The community picnic event was nothing short of amazing and engaging for families, not to mention, everything was free. If you did not get a chance to stop by this year, be sure to attend next year. Great things are happening in CFB, and we are ecstatic to be a part of it. Thank you. Okay, Item 2C is Committee Updates. We will begin with the board's subcommittees. The purpose of our board's subcommittees is for a subset of the board to work collaboratively to support a particular focus by preparing and drafting documents of work products for the board's review and adoption. The three standing subcommittees and the board members serving on those subcommittees are shown on the screen. Board members, do we have any updates from our board's subcommittees since our last board meeting, dealing with student outcomes? Okay. Board members also serve as a Board members also serve as a liaison for district committees. The role of the board liaison is to facilitate regular and smooth communication to and from the board, to provide board support and information, and to support committee operations. The board members serving in this capacity are listed on this screen. Board members, do we have any updates from district committees since our last board meeting? Mr. Shackman?
The Education Foundation has met, and we are off to a great start this year, working very hard on sponsorships and accomplishing a great number of objectives, and we are thankful for that, and we look forward to a number of events, including the Teacher of the Year support.
Excellent, excellent. Anybody else? Okay. Item 2D is District Announcements. Dr. Eldridge?
Okay, I just want to say, what an exciting time to be in CFB with our Cowboys. It's just a great opportunity for our students to participate in Girls' Flag Football and for our partnership with them. Today, we had voter registration at Turner, and I want to thank Representative Aden Chia and our City Council member, Elizabeth Villafranca, from Farmers Branch, that they were helped registering our students to vote. I think that's such an important right that people need to take, and I appreciate the community for assisting us with that. I think we had a great 50th celebration with Newman Smith. It was so great to be on the field and to see all of the alumni come back to CFB to celebrate that they attended one of our high schools. I just, I agree with you, Ms. Brady, the parades have been great. Our football teams, for the first time last week, all four of our football teams won it, and I think, Randy, that's a record, correct? I think we talked about that, but what an awesome, you know, when, when you win for kids, you win, and, and the spirit of the community is, is live and well. I want to thank Kim Holcomb, Ms. Holcomb and her team, for all the curriculum work and the training and working with the teachers and the students, because when you receive the Blue Ribbon Award, or the Lone Star Award is now what it's called because it's local in Austin, that doesn't come by chance. That becomes all the hard work that you put in, and all the work our, our teachers did for our students. To me, we were the only two schools in North Texas to receive that, and that's just an incredible honor. So, thank you to your team for all the hard work. And our Hispanic Heritage Month has been amazing, and to watch our students perform at Creekview was incredible, with their new dresses that they were wearing, and all the videos and the events that you see online has been, when you see kids perform and the hours they put in, the students told me how heavy those dresses were at the game, and you know that they're putting in all the work to get their routines right. So, and last but not least, I want to, it's Principal Appreciation Month. It is so hard to lead a school. There are so many things that our principals have to worry about, and we have some of the best, and, and the best leads the best, so I can't thank them enough. And I love the video Karen with all the principals waving. I think that just shows a great side. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Eldridge. Next on the agenda is Item 2E, Update from PTA. Before Ms. Collins decides to speak, if you would like to have a brief pause, so you may exit the meeting under the guise of just needing a break. So if you'd like to leave, this is a good opportunity to do so. Ms. Collins?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Eldridge, Vice President Brady, and esteemed board. Before I begin, I certainly want to remind everyone of our PTA motto, which is to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. I am Kinchevia Collins. I am wearing two, can you hear me now? Okay. Wearing two hats tonight. One, I am proud to serve as this year's Vice President of Programs for the CFB ISD Council of PTAs, and I am also the proud parent of a class of 2025 graduate from Newman Smith High School. The new PTA year has begun, and as many of you know, our membership numbers have begun as well, and we currently have 4,215 members district-wide, which is awesome. Let's give everyone an applause for that. For those of you who have yet to join, the best way to join a single PTA is to go to joinpta.org, and you can select the school in which you would like to become a member of. And then another great way to support us is through multiple PTAs, which are going through our Council of PTAs website. Here, you can join all 32 of our PTAs district-wide, or a high school feeder pattern of your choice. You can choose those options through our website as well, which is cfpta.org. We also have on our website available as well our 2025-2026 CFB PTA T-shirts available. Our First District Extravaganza, which is our training session for all of our PTA leaders throughout the district, was a huge success. Thank you to everyone who came out to attend and to support us, including board members Mr. Shackman and Ms. Benavides. Thank you. And then our next training, which will be in the spring, will be held in February, so stay tuned for those dates and times at the Watten Center. The National PTA Reflections Contest is now off and running. I can't believe we're already at that point in the school year, but it is off and running, and this year's theme is "I Belong." We hope that all of our schools will participate, and the advancing spreadsheets will be due on November 7th, and submissions will be due on December the 1st. There is more information on our website about that as well. And we are excited again this year, after taking a one-year hiatus, to welcome the Harlem Wizards back to CFB, to take on our CFB Champions Basketball Team on Saturday, October 25th, at Newman Smith High School, and tip-off will be at 6:30 PM. We would love to have all 32 of our schools represented on the Champions Team. Principals, please, if you're in the audience tonight, please remember to submit your player, your player's name. You have until Monday, October 6th to do so, and then we have to close it off so that we can prepare for our teams and get them uniformed and, and all of those good things. We would love to have all of you join us at the game. Tickets are currently available on sale at harlemwizards.com. You can also link that from our cfpta.org website, but we would love to have you come out, come out and support the community. It's a great night of fun. Dr. Eldridge is one of our referees. I didn't laugh, that wasn't me. Dr. Eldridge, do not blame me. But it should be a great fun spirit tonight, so we hope that you all will join us, and please spread the word in your respective communities. Our current calendar includes dates and times of all of our delegates' meetings and is posted also on our website. As you can tell, our website is a plethora of information. There you can also find the store to, as I mentioned, purchase T-shirts and your champion memberships. Unfortunately, this, this month, we had no entries for our September Challenge, so we can't award anyone, but we will try again for October. The challenge for October is Fall Festival, Family, Friends, and Fun, and those entries are due on October 31st, so that they can be awarded at the November school board meeting. We will see all of you at our next delegate meeting, which is October the 8th at 6:30 PM, right here in the boardroom. And once again, we thank you so very much for your continued support and advocacy for our children. Together, we are PTA. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Yes, the Wizards game is a wonderful community event. I highly encourage you all to come out and have fun with us. The next item is Item Number Three, Audience for Guests. Persons who wish to speak during Audience for Guests must have electronically submitted an online form for this purpose prior to the deadline and closing of the form. As of the posted deadline, we have one submission to address to the board. Before we begin, I will remind our audience members of the board's procedures for handling Audience for Guests. Anyone interested to speak to person, in person during the Audience for Guests must have electronically submitted a form and listed the topic they wish to discuss by the 1:00 PM deadline for the form submission. Each speaker will be allowed to speak once during the Audience for Guests. Speakers designated as a stakeholder will be allowed a maximum of three minutes, and speakers designated as a non-stakeholder will be allowed a maximum of one minute to address the board dictated by Board Policy BED Local. Recognizing that students are the heart of our work, we ask that speakers model respectful and constructive behavior as we expect from our students. Please keep your comments as civil and courteous and avoid profanity or personal attacks. Refrain from discussing students who are not your own child. Yelling disruptive behavior or discriminatory remarks will not be permitted. In the event your comment and the judgment of the presiding officer constitutes a complaint or a charge against an employer or officer, it may be necessary for me to interrupt you and ask you to stop and direct you to proceed to the school district's formal grievance procedures. If a speaker is seeking board resolution of a specific complaint, that concern should be addressed through the district's grievance process, which can be found online and include policies DGBA, FNG, and GF. Grievance forms can be obtained online through the district's website. In compliance with the Open Meetings Act, please note that the board will not respond to the public directly and will address any agenda items as deemed necessary when they are listed on the agenda. The timer will be shown on the screen in front of you and will begin when you arrive at the podium to speak. Again, that speaker's presentation will be limited to the allotted time. We will begin with our stakeholder comments. The speaker's presentation will be limited to three minutes. And I believe our first speaker is Ms. Cindy Hilton.
Yes, I am here to speak, we have a, an item on the agenda. It is Item 5F, and it is the Consideration Approval List of New Books to Be Purchased for the School Library Collection. So, I wanted to address, because this is a new bill that was passed by the 89th Legislature, and the school, SB 13, it was signed into law and with the passage of the 89th Texas Legislature. That law was championed by Lieutenant Governor Dan Patrick. Of course, Governor Abbott signed it into law after it passed the House and the Senate. These mandate new requirements for school libraries and gives concerning material acquisition, review, and parental oversight. The key changes include school districts adopting policies for library materials, the creation of the local school library advisory councils, if petitioned by parents, and providing parents with more access and control over their child's library materials. I thought this was a fair, an excellent bill, because there has been, all throughout Texas now, there are many school districts that are addressing this in a positive way. It sets that this law means that there's policy and standards that the school districts adopt concerning the library materials, that parents have access and control over the school's catalog and can specify which materials their child is restricted from checking out. And then we also have that local school library advisory council, which I would, I don't know if that's been adopted yet by you all, but I would really encourage that, and I would offer to be a volunteer on that with other parents, you know, if you also choose, because I think it's very important. I am certainly not an expert in this area, however, I know people that are. And so, so they, we, we were given a list of 2,179 library books that were to be considered. And so we took that list, and there are very highly credible organizations that already have a list of books that are sexually explicit, sexually inappropriate for schools at their, at the ages of elementary school, middle school, and high school. And, and so we submitted that list to them, and then they ran it through their database, and nothing came up. Yay. Okay? So, everything that y'all were recommending were just fine.
Thank you, Ms. Hilton. I'm so sorry, your three minutes is up.
Okay. I will talk to you all later, because I have one little thing I want to talk to y'all about.
Thank you for sharing your comments tonight. Item 4A, Bond Oversight Committee. These are items for non-action and just discussion.
So, Mr. Moore will introduce this item. He will introduce the Bond Oversight Committee and explain what their purpose is and why we have them.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Dr. Eldridge, Vice President Brady. Board members, our Bond Oversight Committee is comprised, is comprised of, is a group of voluntary advisors. They advise you as a board, they advise us as administration, they advise the community, and it is a, really a servant leadership group. The primary purpose of the group is to ensure that the actions and the decisions centered around the May 23 bond election are in line with what voters elected and voted and put into place. And so, we have nine members on the committee. Three of them are here tonight. We have Kathryn Carlin, Nancy Klein, Tom Hammons, and one of the charges of the committee is to give an annual report to the board, and so I believe Ms. Carlin is going to give that on behalf of the BOC. So they, they do a wonderful job. We are grateful to them and for the advisory capacity they serve for us, so I will turn things over to Ms. Carlin.
Vice President Brady, members of the board, and Dr. Eldridge. I'm Kathryn Carlin, and along with Nancy Klein, we are the co-chairs for the Bond Oversight Committee, and we wish to thank you for postponing our report to this month, I think, what is it called? FOMO? Is that what the kids say? Like, so, I'm happy to be here, and as Mr. Moore introduced Tom Hammons and Nancy that are here to give us moral support. So you have, a month ago, you got the 24-25 Annual Report of the 2023 Bond Oversight Committee, having completed our second year of the committee's commitment. In addition to these guys, member of the committees includes Noe Franco, Phil Gumbert, Billy Bob Messer, Wesley Newt, Jolynn Porter, and Jaime Rivas. And Kim Brady and Paul Gilmore are our trustee liaisons, and we'd like to thank the past trustee, Tara Hrbachek, for her, for her service to the board and to our committee. Chris Moore, the Assistant Superintendent of Operations, has been our facilitator and provided support through our tenure, and we're grateful for his leadership. We appreciate the opportunity to learn more about the important investments being made to support our students, faculty, staff, and community, and we thank you for your confidence in us with this mission. As you know, as Mr. Moore just said, the Bond Oversight Committee, or the BOC, serves in a voluntary advisory capacity to the trustees' administration, and in a nutshell, it's viewed as a resource to help assure that the intentions of the 2023 Citizens Bond Planning Committee that were adopted by the trustees and approved by the voters in May 2023 were executed. So on behalf of the committee, we'd like to summarize a few key points in the report, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Our committee meets quarterly. The meetings typically include an update from Corey Blackburn, Executive Officer of Construction, regarding the construction projects, including scope, status, timelines, bond authorizations, budget, and future plans. He was assisted by district staff members, as well as architectural and construction firms. Your packet contains information about the four meetings that we held this past year, specifically the October 2025, I'm sorry, 2024 meeting, included the update portion of, of, I'm sorry, the update portion of the meeting, as well as elections and coach, of the co-chairs. The Facility Planning Advisory Group was defined for us, who was, who was tasked with providing consolidation criteria was introduced. The January 2025 meeting provided numerous construction and design updates at eight facilities. The Facility Planning Advisory Group completed its task, and note that two of the BOC members served on that committee to represent the interests of the bond and the BOC. The April 2025 meeting was held at River Chase Elementary, where in addition to project updates, we toured the newly renovated special ed areas and the playground. July was the final meeting of this year, and it's on the actions of this meeting that we'd like to focus. And Ms. Rodriguez, thank you for taking our minutes. They're fabulous. There comes a time in the life cycle of the BOC that transitions away from a more passive, update-driven agenda into a phase where the BOC is more actively engaged. Over the past year, several topics had been presented which hadn't been fully resolved, but now with the $131 million-plus bond funds freed by the consolidation effort, comes a renewed reliance on the BOC purpose to review and advise. Recently, these projects included early childhood and middle school upgrades, specifically, number one, the early childhood pre-K options. number one, the early childhood pre-K options. The committee was presented with three options, which included a single centralized early childhood campus, a decentralized pre-K facilities at, at four of the originally targeted elementary schools, and the third option was a hybrid option of the pre-K campus, along with fewer elementary campus and early childhood renovations. The overwhelming consent of the committee was in favor of the decentralized model originally recommended by the Citizens Planning Committee. Number two, the BOC was presented with plans to increase the scope and investment at Polk and Bush Middle Schools, which haven't had the major renovations that the others have had. The committee agreed with the scope and funding changes presented. However, there was a desire to be conservative in the visitor-side bleacher constructions at the, on the athletics fields, since that's uncommon, seems to be uncommon at middle schools. And then, number three, in general, the committee urges constraint in allocating all the freed-up funds. In terms of facilitation and function of the BOC meetings, in particular going forward, our meetings will begin with a reiteration of our Purpose and Responsibility section that's in our guidelines. The next session, section of the meetings will be for updates and discussion, continuing the current practice of staff, along with supporting architecture and construction firms, providing a status update with associated question-and-answer sessions. The third section of the meeting will be for feedback and decisions. Areas where staff will present options to the BOC to discuss and decide as a group, such as scope adjustment, budget scheduling issues, that kind of thing. This feedback session, section will typically require a level of voting and consensus, which will be recorded in the minutes. Number four, the committee will also provide input on meeting date adjustments and topics for future discussion. One note about our meeting schedule, it's been set three years out, but conflicts and other situations arise, making it necessary to adjust some of those dates. It's also important to notice that the 2018 BOC met every other month for its entire tenure. So, additional meetings, either in person or virtually, may need to be scheduled. The Consider Meeting Frequency and Dates was also the lone 2023-2024 action item presented to the trustees in our report, and so that's now hopefully addressed. And then, number five, the final phase of the meetings will be for a post-meeting survey to be sent to the members to ensure that the topics are timely and the discussions are productive. Next, we recognize the importance of member commitment to attend all the meetings in compliance with our guidelines and to maintain continuity in our discussions. Therefore, an attendance action plan will be implemented going forward, and that consists of three phases. Number one, after one absence, the chair will call to check, check in to make sure all is well. After two absences, the trustee or district representative who appointed that member will make that check-in call. And number three thereafter, a decision will be made to potentially replace that member with another appointee. We're grateful for the time these volunteers give in service to our district, and we know that they understand the importance of these discussions. So, for 2025-2026, we propose two action items. Action item one, continue implementation of the new meeting format described above, with special emphasis on BOC's purpose to review and advise. And action item number two, implementation of the attendance plan as described above to ensure continuity throughout the remainder of our tenure. This concludes the element, elements of our report, and we're available to respond to any comments or questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carlin. Thank you all who serve on this committee. We really appreciate your time and effort. Thank you. Board members, do you have any questions for Mr. Moore or Ms. Carlin? Ms. Barnes?
Thank you so much for everything that you guys have done. It's very thorough. I had a small question. I think you mentioned it, and I was just, I wanted a little more clarification. With the middle schools, you mentioned something about bleachers. Can you go into that just briefly? I, I didn't know.
Among the proposals that we looked at at that July meeting was an overview of how the reallocated funds of the $131 million may work into some of the campuses. One of the pieces was at Bush Middle School specifically, possibly bleachers, improvements of the, of the facility, the field, the track, and the bleachers. What we looked at had a proposal of bleachers on both sides of the field, and the BOC sought clarification on that because it's not necessarily common to see double sides of bleachers at middle schools. And so, that was one of the things that they brought up, and we noted within that piece. Does that answer the question?
Perfectly. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Any other questions, board members? Thank you both for your presentations. Appreciate it. The next agenda item is 4B, 2023 Bond Funds Reallocation. Dr. Eldridge, please introduce this item.
I would like to thank Kathryn Carlin. Thank you, Kathryn, and Nancy, and all of you that serve on the BOC. It is a huge task, and we've had lots of dynamics, and I just appreciate your thoughtfulness and, and your thoroughness of everything that we're doing as we continue to want to make this district the best. This next item from Mr. Moore and Mr. Blackburn is just an information item. There is no action on this item. It's just presenting possible bond reallocations of what we could do from the $131 million. So, thank you, Mr. Moore.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Dr. Eldridge. Vice President Brady, trustees. We are here tonight to talk to reallocation of our bond funds. You heard a bit of it just previously from Ms. Carlin with the Bond Oversight Committee report. So, that plays nicely into this. Corey Blackburn, our construction officer, he's going to talk to a few of these slides as well. And as Dr. Eldridge said, this is information-only tonight. There's no vote. We'll bring this back to you in November for an official vote. So, we're talking about reallocations, so obviously something changed. What, what exactly is it? Initially, there was a $716 million bond election in May of 2023, as we all know. Since that election, there's been a lot that's happened. I think that's an understatement, but there's been a lot that's, that's, that's transitioned and gone on, namely, we consolidated four campuses in the spring of, of '25. And those four campuses had $131 million of bond funds budgeted toward them. That money's still there. That money's still accessible, and that money can, can help students. And we can still honor the intent of the bond with those funds and it, in ways that are supported by the public, and we will demonstrate that here in just a, a few slides. Timeline, I didn't go back to May of 2023. Didn't figure you wanted me to stand here and go through 10 slides of dots and bullets dating back two years. But again, this does begin in May of '23. Most recently, March of '25, I mentioned the consolidation of the four campuses. April, after the consolidation, we knew that there were funds associated with those schools, and so, we began researching how we could utilize those funds and, again, honor the intent. June, we, as a district, approved the, the bond sale of which the one, the second bond sale, of which that $131 million was part of it. In July, we visited with the Bond Oversight Committee, as, as Ms. Carlin just said, and really got more in-depth on what we could potentially do with those funds. And then, in August, we, we, Mr. Blackburn's going to talk more about that BOC recommendation. In August, we did a community survey with a, with, with Basile. So, I'm going to get into that here shortly, and that really helped us confirm that what we were thinking, what we were looking at, just to kind of confirm that where we are going aligned with what the community members want as well. And then, in October, here we are tonight. So, I've mentioned that the funding can still help. How, how can it still help? It's still there. Really, there's three different facets. Pre-K, currently, we're serving less than 35% of our eligible pre-K students. Ms., Ms. Holcomb has shared data from COMMIT, data that we've pulled that, that demonstrates that, and the funding can help us reach out and, and improve the, the reach that we have and, and, and more of our, our pre-K students. Tuition-based pre-K, that is a demonstrated need, specifically on the west side of our campus. We don't have the seats to accommodate that tuition-based aspect, and then, we can keep students closer to home. And as you'll see in our proposal, we're really focusing on two geographic areas that's, currently, we're moving students away from the campuses where they are zoned to attend, and we can keep them closer to home. Middle school, Bush and Polk are both in need of attention. Both are receiving some, to some extent, with bond funding, but really, this would allow us to bring Bush and Polk more in line with Perry, Field, and Blalack. Blalack, of course, currently under construction. The wonderful renovations and additions that were done at Perry and Field over the last few years, it would kind of complete the circle, if you will, of, of upgrading our middle school campuses. And as we all know, middle school's an area that needs attention. Middle school's where we lose our kids. And then, district-wide, construction costs, that's obvious. That's not ever going to drop, potentially, how that funding can help. And then, security improvements. With this 89th session, House Bill 33 specifically, I tallied all of the areas that were impacted by operations, and I think Rachel Freeman's name, I wrote out next to 16 or 17 different legislative initiatives because they were tagged with safety and security. So, that is something that will not ever subside. So, we have our thoughts as staff. We, we're in this every day. We look at this every day. We're well-versed in it, but we also want to, we're a public entity, and we're supported by, by a board, we're supported by taxpayers, we're supported by parents, community members. And so, we, with something like this, a reallocation of funds of this nature, we want to ensure that we are intentional with gathering feedback to ensure that, with, that the, the area that we're looking at pursuing is in line with a broader audience. And so, those are the two ways that we, we sought the additional feedback. Ms. Carlin just touched on some of the bond oversight aspect, and then, we, we heard, we had two meetings that touched on that, got into it in April initially, and then more in-depth in July. And then, Basile's really structured questions, provided another level of feedback, and I'll, I'll speak to that. But initially, I'll let Mr. Blackburn, he'll kind of talk through what we discussed with the Bond Oversight Committee.
One of the things we discussed with the Bond Oversight Committee was you can see that the original planning for these funds included four campuses. It covered elementary and middle schools. There was an emphasis on pre-K in the original planning. There were both new construction and renovation projects, and it included one storm shelter as originally planned. And the proposals that we presented for the committee to discuss included three to six campuses, again, elementary and middle schools. It continued the pre-K emphasis. There were both new construction and renovation components, and could have included up to four storm shelters. And as you heard Ms. Carlin say, the majority of the committee's supportive renovations at Bush Middle School and Polk Middle School. They preferred pre-K additions at existing campuses in lieu of a standalone pre-K center. As many as four additions were preferred, but the majority, the vast majority preferred supporting a reduced number of additions.
So, the, the Basile's survey. Basile's is a research organization. They're based in, in Austin. They do work across the, across the country, and the survey really provided us an opportunity to, to gain extended community feedback. And you would be hard-pressed to find a group that's better at what they do, at gathering information and compiling it, than, than Basile's. Qualitative research is their bread and their butter. Our district used them in 2023 as part of the bond, the bond research that went into the 2023 bond election. I've had the opportunity to use them twice in previous districts, and you see those three bullets at the bottom. That's really the, the details of our survey here. Our survey ran August 5th through the 8th. There were 400 respondents, and that margin of error of plus or minus 4.9%, they're dead on. Every time I've seen them, every time I've used them, every time I've read anything of theirs, and that is tied directly to the, to the number of responses. A couple notes specific to our survey. It was a mix of phone and text. There were 57% were phone calls, 43% were text, text samples. And then, that, I've mentioned that the, that plus or minus, plus or minus 4.9% of how they, how they gather that. So, we had three primary objectives with this survey. Really, one was to just gather general awareness of the May 23 bond, really kind of get a, the bearings specifically related to awareness of the bond overall, funds that were related to the four consolidated campuses. This, the second aspect was to gauge middle school awareness and support. If the funds used in the direction that we were, that we were leaning and researching would be supported by the community. And the third aspect was to measure the pre-K support and the awareness of, of the programs that were introduced with the bond, and then also to see if the direction we were wanting to go with pre-kindergarten was in line with what the community wanted. That, that's the awareness piece. I've mentioned the first component was awareness, and that really kind of gives you an idea of, of the camp, of the questions that we asked to gauge just general awareness. And I really think that, that sample of those three kind of summarizes it. You can see there that, first question, did you know there was a bond election in May 2023? Forty percent, 41% of respondents indicated that they did. And I know 41 plus 50 is not 100. I did major in journalism, but I can do math. That 9% would, they were indifferent, or they were, they, they had no opinion. So, none of these quite reached 100, and that difference was, that, that number wasn't different. The second question, did you know that the '23 bond allocated $131 million for the replacement of the four campuses, improvements, rather, of those four campuses? It's a very specific question, but again, we kind of wanted to measure the level of detail that was understood. Just 24% indicated that they were aware of, of that. And then, that third, that third camp, question that I put in here, did you know that Central, Fresno, McCoy, and Long were closed this spring as part of the budget cuts, and then that the monies associated with them had not been spent? That percentage was high. That's a very specific question, but, you know, close to 30% indicated they were aware of that. The awareness on that question was higher than it was on the question above it, and that was, that was a little more specific. So, that kind of gives you a general awareness, and I think that that slide kind of helps us keep in mind that, you know, no matter the effort that we put into advertising and the effort that we put into raising awareness with things such as bond elections, consolidations, and rezoning, things that we, we want the public to be aware of, sometimes people outside of parents and staff and our target audiences, they're not always as engaged as we think they, they, they would be or should be despite our efforts. But that kind of was a good bearing on, on what it was that we wanted to see with regard to awareness. Key findings, so, within the survey, there, there are really two categories from each respondent, and, and that's really where Basile shines in what they do. The, the first category is based on the initial, the initial thought, and those are the, those are the immediate responses that reflect a, a person's initial opinion, their initial thought without, it's just their belief, it's their, their emotion right when you ask them the question. The second category, that's an informed decision, and that's of the same person, and those are conclusions that someone reaches after you give them more context, you give them more facts, you give them more data. And so, what Basile's does, and what this allows us to do, is, is the comparison. When you're looking at the initial versus informed, that's really invaluable for research because it helps highlight the, the impact of the decision-making once they receive the information. And then, as, as we did with Basile's in '23, it really helps understand underlying biases when you're looking at policy and initiatives and things along those lines. And so, you can see there how the, how those questions shaped out with regard to pre-K and middle school. The initial thought, both categories, the top is, is pre-K, the, the lower is middle school, both highly supportive. 67% were in support of, of using a portion of the bond funds for expansions to pre-kindergarten, and 64% were in, in favor of, of using a portion of the funds for middle school improvements at Bush and Polk. And then, the informed went up nine points in each category. And again, there were questions that, that informed the, the respondent more with regard to what the impact could be, but it went from 67% support to 76% for bond funds for pre-K, and 73%, or rather, 64% to 73% using the funds for improvements at the, at the middle schools. And so, really intuitive there on that. The three options that we used, we dived a bit more into pre-K to, to kind of dive more and, and ask a few more questions and get specific opinions on where people stood. And Corey, Corey and Ms. Carlin both talked about some of those options, but the, the questions that, that we asked really were, do you want pre-K additions at campuses? Do you want a pre-K center? Or do you want a pre-K, a combination of both? And so, this really tracked along with where the Bond Oversight Committee was going as well. The, the preferred method was at campuses. You can see there, 79% were in favor of having the additions at the existing elementary campuses. But when you look at that slide, really, no matter how you slice it, the all are more than half supportive of what we were proposing to do at, at pre-K, no matter which avenue we, we ended up wanting to go with. And so, with that, our recommendations with regard And so with that, our recommendations with regard to the, to the funds, of the one hundred thirty-one million dollars that are, that are remaining, that would be reallocated from those consolidated campuses, forty, forty-eight point nine million dollars designated to Bush and Polk Middle School for their renovations, thirty-eight million dollars go to the pre-K additions at Thompson and Los Colinas Elementary specifically. That's eighty-six point nine million combined, which would leave a little over forty-four million dollars from those reallocated funds. And that is, again, that's in line with the bond oversight committee preference, the recommendation of reserving some of the funds for the unknowns, whether that's increased construction costs, whatever it may be. But we can also work through that remainder of those funds with our bond infrastructure committee, with our bond facilities committee, get back with the bond oversight committee and go from there. And so that's, that's the recommendation. And with that, we will take any questions you all may have.
Thank you, Mr. Moore and Mr. Blackburn. Board members, do you have any questions? Carolyn? Um, excuse me, Ms. Benavides.
Thank you, Ms. Brady. I was going to ask about the additions, the pre-K additions. Are those additional wings or repurposing wings in those campuses?
Those are additional wings.
Additional wings, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilmore?
Before you mentioned that the bond included the shelters. Is that still included in there? It's just not noted?
Yes, sir.
And then on the survey, we did four hundred surveys of individuals. Did, did we have demographics in that? Like, did the people that were taking the surveys, did they have kids in the schools or were they?
Yes, sir. There were, so it was four hundred individuals and the way they pull their information is from registered voter blocks. They've got to pull the data somewhere. And so they utilize the voter registration. Of the four hundred individuals, thirty-three percent of them had children that were age eighteen or under. Three percent of those had children under three, four percent had children ages three to four, six percent had children under five, fourteen percent had children who were elementary age, nine percent had children who were middle school age, eighteen percent had children who were high school age, and twenty-five percent of those surveyed had, had children who were in CFB schools. Just six percent of those had students who were in, they had school-aged children, but they were not in CFB schools. And the, kind of along those lines, the, the, if you look at our district from, I guess, northeast to southwest, forty-one percent of the surveys came in that first chunk, kind of Bush, from the outer boundaries down to Bush, and then thirty-one percent was central, basically Bush over to thirty-five, and then the remaining twenty-eight percent was from thirty-five south into Irving. So they broke it up into those three chunks as far as their geographic locations of the phone calls and the text messages.
Good information. Ms. Benavides?
How many were, I know only four hundred replied, but how many surveys were sent out?
Ma'am?
How many surveys were sent out? Was it just four hundred and four hundred responded?
It, I don't know the, so the way that they do with both the texts and the phone calls is they'll target groups and they might, they get you on the phone. If it's a, if it's a, the phone call, you've got to complete the survey. So even if you're on there for fifteen minutes and you get disconnected at minute seventeen, that one doesn't count. They'll hang up, call back, try to get you or find another number. It's the same with the, with the text outreach. The entire piece of it has to be completed in its entirety. Otherwise, it's discarded and they'll, they have to be true-to-form, completed from start to finish.
Thank you.
Board members, any other questions? Mr. Gilmore?
It probably goes without saying, but I'm assuming we did the pre-K additions for Thompson and Los Colinas based on our numbers of, that Kim gave us on the waitlist.
Waitlist was a portion, yes, sir. But beyond just that, so Thompson specifically, it's an area that's north of one ninety. It's, it's densely clustered within about five other campuses. It's the area of our district where we have the most, the most eligible pre-K students based on the seven, eight different criteria. It's also heavily influenced with, with newcomers. That's the area where a lot of our newcomers are. Currently, we can't offer, and Kim, if I'm speaking out of turn, feel free to jump in. Currently, we can't offer pre-K at Thompson specifically because the constraints, K-five, the size is not there. There's no classroom space for it at Thompson. Davis is within that proximity. They can't offer pre-K at Davis, same reason. And then McQuarter. There's no pre-K that's able to be offered at McQuarter because of size. Sheffield is also in the area. It's offering pre-K, but it only has two sections of pre-K and those two sections are also within, they're right, butting right up against the eighty-five percent functional capacity limits. And so that's an area that this would alleviate a lot of, a lot of pressure points and bring students who we are currently moving to Rainwater and to Kent back into that, that general Thompson area. Los Colinas is very much the same. It's, it's west of thirty-five Valley Ranch area. It's, it's the only district, area in the district really that's demonstrated the need and the want for tuition-based pre-K. It's the only area of our district that's consistently grown. Over the last several years, Los Colinas is exceeding its eighty-five percent functional capacity. Freeman is as well. River Chases edging right up against it. And there are a total of three hundred seventy-two students that were shut, like Lavalita, it's butting up against it, but they have a hundred forty-three pre-K students at Lavalita in seven different sections. And there are a hundred and two at Freeman. And so really, there's pressure points within, in those areas as well.
Ms. Barnes?
This is a little bit of a general question, but for middle school, for Bush and Polk, when was the last time there were any renovations done at those two schools of any kind?
We currently have limited renovations going at both of those schools, but we'd like to do more, to bring them more in line with schools that have had major renovations.
Is Polk at max capacity or close to capacity? Polk?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you both very much for your presentation. Appreciate it. Item five, we will proceed to our next agenda item number five, the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a mechanism that the board uses to approve a number of routine items together with a single vote. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the public notice for this meeting includes a list of all consent agenda items and the board has been provided ample information about these items in advance. Prior to any action taken on the consent agenda, board members may request a withdrawal of individual items for clarification or discussion. Board members, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda at this time? Hearing none and seeing none, board members, do I have a motion regarding the consent agenda? Ms. Barnes?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
As presented?
As presented, sorry.
Great. I have a motion from Ms. Barnes, so I have a second. Mr. Shackman, is there any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Six in favor and none opposed, the motion carries. The next agenda item is number six for discussion and/or action. Ms. Dr. Eldridge, could you introduce this item?
And Ms. Malkus will be introducing this item regarding waiver requests for teacher certification. We need to make, she will present on a resolution for our student, well, they're not student teachers, they're teachers that have not maybe passed their certification exam. And in order to keep them, the Texas Education Agency says we need to make sure the board is aware and we have a resolution in place. So, Ms. Malkus?
Sorry, I'm not used to a PC. Sure, BJ, I love to hear that. Good evening, Vice President Brady, Dr. Eldridge, board members. And so tonight, what I'm going to share with you all is the fact, is the consideration approval of resolution for a waiver. When classroom teachers exhaust all methods of being certified by the state, while we work with them to help them get their tests passed, we have to request from the school board a waiver to allow our teachers to stay in the classroom. And so with that, we have three teachers right now that have used up their one-year emergency permits and they're not eligible for any other additional certification. We have another teacher that has used the emergency permit that does not qualify for the TCAP because they're teaching special education. So there's a lot of criteria that goes into determining whether or not, which kind of certification we can grant them. And then despite the good faith that recruitment efforts, we were not able to find some certified candidates for some of these positions. And so without waivers, our students would face disruption and loss of instructional continuity. And so the district's seeking approval from the board to submit a general waiver to TEA to allow these identified teachers to stay in the classroom with their students. And so the board action, the next step for the board action is to approve the resolution that's presented to you this evening, authorizing the submission of the waivers.
Board members, do you have any questions for Dr. Smalkus? Mr. Shackman?
I'd just like to point out, and thank you, Dr. Smalkus, this isn't where just somebody's been plucked off the street. These are people who have been performing and being supervised by all appropriate methods of administration and they do a good job with their kids. And so I, I think it's important to clarify, this is something that is very important. And Dr. Smalkus, we appreciate all of the HR-related and administrative processes that are helping these individuals complete their certification.
Thank you.
Board members, any other questions? Board, this item is marked for possible action. Does the board wish to take action? Mr. Shackman?
I would move that we file the waiver as presented.
I have a motion from Dr. Shackman. Do I have a second? Ms. Garza-Rojas, is there any discussion, board members? All those in favor, raise your hand.
Thank you.
With a motion, excuse me, with a vote of six in favor and zero opposed, the motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Smalkus. Item six C, to consider and approve the addition of fifth grade math board goal. Dr. Eldridge, would you please introduce this item?
So you all know, we've had our work studies and we're focused on our student outcomes. So this was the goal that we all agreed to add. And so, Ms. Holcomb, if you'll present our new addition of our math goal to the board so we can take action.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Vice President Brady, Dr. Eldridge and distinguished members of the board. We will be presenting this evening a review of the current HB3 already-approved board goals and a recommendation for an additional goal of our fifth grade math goal. Dr. Julian will be going through the slides for you this evening to kind of review where we were with HB3 and then also where we are now and the recommendation for the new goal and how we landed on that goal for your consideration this evening.
As you'll remember, House Bill III board goals were the result of our Texas Higher Education Strategic Plan, which declared that by the year 2030, at least sixty percent of Texans ages twenty-five to thirty-four would have a post-secondary credential degree. This slide represents our House, current House Bill III board goals. The math target is the percent of third-grade students that score meets grade level or above on STAR Math will increase from forty-nine percent to sixty-five percent by June of 2030. And the reading language arts target is the percent of third, percent of third-grade students that score meets grade level or above on STAR Reading will increase from forty-six percent to sixty-four percent by June of 2030. Next, we'll move on to college career and military readiness. The CCMR calculations look at the percentage of students that are graduating college career and military ready and divides this count by the total number of graduates. Our House Bill III CCMR goal is the percentage of graduates that meet their criteria for CCMR will increase from seventy-five percent to ninety percent by August 2030. While the state set a goal of sixty percent by 2030, CFB's goals far exceeded the state at ninety percent, a target that aligns with our state accountability measures, which scale as CCMR percentage at eighty-eight percent to a letter grade of A. Next, we'll move on to our proposed intermediate math board goal. The percentage, the target is the percentage of graduates that meet the criteria for fifth grade math will increase from fifty percent to sixty-one percent by August of 2030. And this just goes back and looks at those targets specifically looking for early childhood literacy and math. You can see here, the math target for the year 2026, that's this year, is fifty-three percent, which is the same for reading, fifty-three percent. And our target for this school year, 2026, is eighty-one percent. Just keeping in mind that that is of course a lagging indicator. So our 2026 accountability is reported in our 2027 accountability ratings. And the last is our proposed new annual board goal, the percentage of fifth grade students that meet the score meets grade level or above on STAR will meet the annual board goal and the fifty-three percent is currently set for the 2026 target. And that is all for my portion tonight, and I believe this is an action item, so.
Thank you, Dr. Julian. Board members, this is, item is marked for possible action. Does the board wish to take any action?
Yes, I can ask a question.
Ms. Garza-Rojas, do you have a question?
I do. I just have a quick question. I want to extend my gratitude to you guys for working so hard with us as a board and to be able to team up together to find a new goal, right? So for our community members that are just chiming in tonight and are kind of hopping into this, what can we tell our community members as to why we're focusing on fifth grade math?
Sure. So as you might know, fifth grade math is really a critical age. K through five math lays the foundation for the concepts and skills needed to succeed and also marks the point in sixth grade when students advance, go into an advanced math track. And in sixth grade, note that a sixth grader moves on to take their eighth grade star in the seventh grade and then Algebra I in eighth grade, and then continues in high school. And there's a tremendous amount of data that suggests a positive correlation between this advanced math track and success later, both in high school and as well as after high school.
So you're saying that if we emphasize our resources in fifth grade math, there's potential for our kids to do well in algebra and beyond when they get a little bit further into school? Is that right?
Very much so, yes, ma'am. We actually did a work study, or this summer, with our administrators and we're looking at data from Dallas Commit and they were tracking those students all the way out into their post-secondary and college success. So it extends, this, this is a critical kind of path.
Thank you so much for the clarification.
Board members, any other questions? Ms. Barnes?
Thank you so much. And so with this, with this, one of the things that was looked at was kind of where our scores are currently and where are some ways that the district can really build on that to increase our, our, our ratings for our students in math because that was something that was lagging a little bit, correct? Or, or something that we needed to work on or could build on?
Yes, ma'am. So, yeah, I, I think that's definitely the focus. You know, we have those House Bill III board goals, the one, we were just shy on that third grade target. And then as we look across, that's, that's just an area of focus that if we continue to focus on it, you know, we'll, we'll see that movement.
Thank you. That was the wording I was looking for.
I would also like to say, Ms. Barnes, that when we look at what our goals are, then we come to you all as the board and we say, this is the resources we need for our teachers and our students to achieve this goal. So when we put our emphasis on this math goal, we find out what our teachers need to achieve it. And I know Ms. Holcomb has really been diligently working on where we need more guidance and our teachers need more resources. So we're working on that diligently.
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to add that the MEATs performance indicator is a goal for us across the board for all grade levels, all content areas. Our goal is a three percent increase, which is in our district improvement plan that we'll discuss later. But with this particular fifth grade math goal, it is significant because as we raise MEATs performance percentages, it will help MEETS performance percentages, it will help not only lift our just overall performance in our Domain One scores, but it will also impact us in Domain Three. Both of those are critical to our district's accountability rating, and as we are striving for continued improvement and growth in all areas, the fifth-grade math goal is significant because it sets the students going into secondary math with stronger performance and mastery of standards to be able to tackle those advanced math classes. And as Dr. Julian stated, getting into those Algebra I courses, which only sets that trajectory for high school and beyond in a, in a stronger pathway.
Absolutely. Any other questions, board members? Now, I can say. This item is marked for possible action. Does the board wish to take any action? Mr. Gilmore?
I make a motion on 6C that we approve the addition of fifth-grade math board goal.
Excellent. I have a motion from Mr. Gilmore. Do I have a second? Ms. Garza Rojas, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. With a vote of six, zero, the motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Holcomb and Mr. Julian. The next item is 6D, consider approve the CFP ISD District and Campus Improvement Plans. Dr. Eldridge, would you please introduce this item?
So a lot of work goes into creating our improvement plans, from the district improvement plan to all our campuses. So our principals get together, they do needs assessments. Francisco, Miranda, and Joe La Puma do a great job in making sure our principals really put their plans to work. And then we have Chris Julian, who makes sure his school improvement department holds people accountable for how do we move forward? And then we have our district improvement plan. And with all that, with the goals we add, I want to thank Ms. Holcomb for all the work that you and, and Dr. Julian did with adding these at the last minute. And then we have a comprehensive plan that we work from. It's our playbook. So please explain your presentation and what we've added. So I appreciate you, Ms. Holcomb.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. All right, so this evening, I would like to present our 2526 district improvement plans, as well as our campus improvement plans. We're going to talk about three bullet point areas. The first one is the strategic framework around our plans and sort of how they come together. We will also talk about the process and timeline that we use to create the plans. And then we will then focus on a strategic alignment of how we take the board goals, the House Bill III goals, and all of those in alignment together for a vertical alignment between all campuses, campus plans, and district plans. So to start off, our district improvement plans, which we often refer to as our DIPs, you know, there's a lot of acronyms in education, and our campus improvement plans that we refer to a lot of times as our CIPs, they are strategic frameworks that we use in a school district to enhance not only our educational outcomes, but they also address the areas that we want to improve. So as we're looking at areas and strategies that we feel like will enhance performance, we develop goals and then strategies to help improve those areas of performance. Both the DIP and the CIPs are very essential for us to actually have a better educational environment and outcomes for our students. They help us to drive continuous improvement, and also ensure that all of our students have access to high-quality curriculum and education. So the purpose of our plans really serves several key purposes. The first thing is to identify strengths, where we're doing really well, and continue to focus on improvement in those areas, as well as areas that might be weaknesses that we can improve. In addition, it helps us to set very clear goals that are very aligned across the district, but they are also our focus and our vision that support also our district's mission. We also use them to allocate resources. It helps us to see where we want to start, new processes, new curriculum, new ideas. It also helps us to see where we want to stop, maybe doing some things that may not be producing the, the outcomes that we are looking for. And then what are things that we're doing well, that we're seeing great results with, that we want to continue? It also helps us to provide a structured approach, the timelines, as well as responsible parties, checking and monitoring growth over time. It also helps us to promote accountability to measure that progress, engage all of our stakeholders, as well as foster the long-term improvement. As Dr. Eldridge mentioned, the plans are pulled together by a variety of stakeholders from the campus level as well as the district level, and we also get feedback from our District Improvement Council that we meet throughout the year to get feedback from them as well. But at the heart of all of these plans really lies the driving force behind all of the foundation, which is our CFP vision, and our mission, and our core values. So the process and timeline, it begins really at the kind of end of the school year. The district needs assessments are developed at campus and district levels. So between May and July, which is critical because we have end-of-year data, as well as our STAR performance data that comes in around June, and we're able to see how we did and where we need to make improvements. So with that, we start developing a comprehensive needs assessment that then drives either possibly revised goals, maybe some new goals, or then looking at strategies that we want to start, stop, or continue. So the revised goals and strategies happens around the same timeframe, between May and August. And then in the summertime, we develop work sessions with our campus principals. The area directors, as well as Dr. Julian's department, set up a few weeks over at Perry, and we have work sessions with our principals, and they come in with their plans, and we work through all of those strategies and help support them in development of what they're doing at their campus level, as well as how they will align to what the district goals are. Then around September, October, the board then approves the plans, which is what we're doing this evening. And after tonight, we will then continue throughout the year to get feedback and review these plans with our District Improvement Council. And then the campus improvement councils will also be looking at their plans and monitoring progress throughout the year. So this is kind of a double process that happens at the local campus level, as well as then at the district level, and we continue to monitor those goals. There are four quarterly monitoring periods in October, January, March, and May, and we pull data and evidence aligned to each of the strategies, and we put those into our Plan for Learning program, and we document the progress along the way. And then at the very end of the year, we do a final review and progress check, which is our outcomes, that we get from our STAR scores, as well as many other data sources, and we then start the process all over again. And so that's kind of how we get to where we are this evening, and our strategic alignment to our key focus areas. So the last thing I want to share with you is just some key focus areas this year for 2526. The district and campus plans do focus on strategies for continued improvement. They are aligned to the board goals, as well as the district's vision and mission. So you'll notice on the screen there, we do have our three House Bill III board goals, third-grade reading, third-grade math, and then the college career military readiness goal, which you just saw presented with Dr. Julian. We also bring quarterly, we bring regular, regular annual reports to the board for progress on those goals each year. The new one you see there on Bullet Point Three is the fifth-grade math goal that we would like to recommend to continue focus on this school year. Under our Guiding Objective One, which is optimizing, engaging, and diverse learning, we have seven goals that we focus on. And so I'm going to just briefly run through these and just give you some examples of things that we are focused on this school year at the district level, but also how that vertically aligns to the board's goals, and then all the way down to the campus goals. So the first goal is across the board, all subjects, all students, all grade levels, we are focusing on a 3% increase of MEETS performance level on STAR. The second goal is the House Bill III board goal of the third-grade reading students scoring at MEETS performance on STAR Reading. The third one is the third-grade math goal that is also our HB3 goal. Goal four is our new one, the fifth-grade MEETS performance goal for STAR Math. Goal five is our emergent bilingual students. We are focusing on them advancing at least one proficiency level, as measured by our 2026 Tellpass exam, by 5%. Goal six is focused on our students who are targeted for dyslexia instruction, increasing their decoding skills by at least three levels, as multiple measures of data will measure. And then goal seven is the percentage of our graduates that meet the CCMR goal, which is our House Bill III board goal. So with those seven goals, under our student outcomes goal, which is the optimizing, engaging, and diverse learning, there's a variety of strategies that we're doing to, to support those goals. And I'm not going to go into all of them, obviously, this evening. They are in the plan that has been submitted tonight for approval, as well as many other areas that are attributed by our entire SLT department, because this is just the first goal, but there are several other goals underneath them that are then monitored by our human resources department, the communications department, operations, technology. All of us are a collective effort in what we're doing with supporting the district plan. So under this one, we are going to be focusing this year on improved Tier One instruction, as well as continuing with multi-tiered systems of support, which is our RTI processes we've been working on very strongly the last two years. One of our big focus area is mastery of the state standards, which we often refer to as the TEACs. We're doing a variety of strategies to support that area, but that has been one of our really big focus areas this past year, which we do believe has proven to, to produce a lot of our outcomes this past year. We had a significant increase in our MEETS and MASTERS performance. We want to continue to increase MEETS performance levels in all subjects and grades, as well as produce and provide high-quality curriculum materials. As you know, this year, we will be adopting new math curriculum that will go into the schools for next year. We also will continue with strong differentiated professional development. We know we have a lot of teachers that are at varying levels of, of experience, and so by providing differentiated staff development, we are able to meet their needs, whether they're here with no years of experience, or they're here for 25 or 30. And that's something we're continuing to focus on in our district professional development department. The early childhood mastery of foundational skills in reading and math, we know is critical as it sets the foundation for all grades above. So we will continue to focus on very targeted goals in those areas, as well as our multilingual supports. We did our multilingual audit last year, and we already have, the first cohort actually of bilingual coaching was wrapping up this week, and so we have a lot of things going on this year in supports of multilingual. As well as our new math program, we are launching our first math fluency program across the elementary levels, as well as some critical thinking programs, which we are very excited about, and actually had a little feature in the news about that. So we're really happy about that. So to kind of give you an example of what this looks like, this is goal one, which is all students increasing at 3% MEETS performance level. This is a screenshot of what it looks like in our program on the side that we monitor. While I know the text is very small, I wanted you to see an example of what that looks like, but that one strategy there is aligned to the tracking of our standards. And with that, we have provided tools and training for our administrators and our department areas to monitor their performance over time with individual standards. And by looking at this spreadsheet, you can see it's color-coded, it's aligned to every standard, and this is an example of a sixth-grade math tracker, and they are taking this to the level of every time they do a unit assessment, they are monitoring what they're performing and how they're scoring. And if we don't score where we want them to be, we spiral those skills in throughout the year. So we're really monitoring this one standard at a time, because if we just cover, 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 we don't sometimes always master things to the depth that we need. And so we're going to continue to focus on our mastery of standards. This is one of our strategies, one of our tools that we have been working on and helping our campuses to not only reflect on their data, but then to set strategies for continuous improvement if their scores are not where they would like for them to be. You've heard us talk a lot about the Progress Learning Program, and I want to thank you again for your continued support of high-quality materials and programs. This is one of the programs that we use for not only interventions, for kids to have a place to close achievement gaps, but it also provides acceleration for kids who work above grade level. And it also gives us a snapshot of where students are on their grade levels and how they're performing. So that's kind of a little dashboard that lights up red, yellow, and green, and it gives a teacher, as well as a campus principal, and even at the district level, kind of a snapshot of how we're doing within each one of those standards. So we're doing this from a granular level with a spreadsheet and PLC work, but we're also monitoring this through our diagnostic testing and our monitoring with our programs throughout the course of the year. This is also the program that aligns to our MAP Growth Test, which we do three times a year, and it then helps take the guesswork out of where do the students need to focus their time and energy, and it gives them their own personalized learning plan for them to work on exactly what they need. And then lastly, I wanted to kind of show that we have vertical alignment all the way up to our House Bill Board Goal. We were very intentional about strategies that we're focusing on. This is an example, again, of what it looks like in our program. Each of those strategies are aligned at the very lowest level, all the way up to third grade. So this is a strategy for third-grade reading. It starts at pre-K, providing differentiated staff development for our teachers. They started what they call pre-K cadres this year, where the pre-K teachers are actually working with the kinder first and second-grade teachers and vertical cohorts. And this kicked off at the beginning of the year this year, and the teachers were so excited because they got to get out of their pre-K Texas guidelines kind of bubble and see what they're going into as kindergarten students. And the conversations and the depth of them being able to share with one another was so eye-opening, and they said this was the beginning of some really great things coming forward with Brianna Burrell and her reading team. So I'm very excited about that work. And that's English and Spanish classrooms, which is really, really exciting to see that collaboration and not working siloed. The next one you can see is the kindergarten through second grade. We were doing this strategy last year, highly successful, and it's monitoring the performance level of our mastery of phonics, mastery of our phonological awareness, and also our reading fluency. We have determined one of our areas is to work on sentence fluency at our lower grades, and that is a targeted area of focus for us this year. And the final two there in this particular area, this is four strategies aligned to one goal, is around the professional development and coaching. And the last one is on writing. We know we have to do continued support to support our short-constructed responses and our extended-constructed responses, which is something that is tested in every grade, every STAR test, all the way up to high school. And it is the one area, when we looked at our data this summer, and we kind of did a deep dive in where is our root of where we need to really work, work hard and focus, and across the board, it was in our writing skills. And so we have a targeted strategy to work on strengthening that across the district. So key takeaways from this evening with our plans. The first is that our strategic framework of our district and campus improvement plans are aligned to not only short-term, short-term goals, but also long-term goals that align to our board goals and our Vision 2030. In addition, the goals and strategies have been established collaboratively by all stakeholders, and they do reflect alignment with established school board goals. The revisions to our 2526 plans reflect vertical strategic alignment to increase deeper levels of mastery and strategies for monitoring and leading, and monitoring our leading indicators. And then our program and strategy evaluations are always ongoing. They help us to ensure that we are on the right track and that we're doing effective practices, and that we are improving and reducing costs where applicable. And that is our district and campus plans in a nutshell. I know that was a lot of information really quickly, and I am happy to answer any questions, and thank you for your continued support. Without the board's support, many of these programs and curriculum materials would not be possible. So I want to thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holcomb. I just want to say thank you to you and your team and our administration for putting all the pieces together so that we look like we are aligned and not everywhere all over the place, which we've been in the past. So thank you so much for putting it all together in a cohesive, aligned, no longer confused situation.
Yes, thank you.
So thank you very much. Board members, do you have any questions for Ms. Holcomb? Ms. Barnes?
I don't really have a question, I just have a comment. I mean, this is just really amazing. I was looking through all of them, and, and just the fact that you don't just go through the student goals, but it's teacher alignment, teacher goals, you know, and just the way the details that go through it, I know there has got to be many, 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 many hours of work and going through research, and these goals and the measures, it's just all really exciting, and I'm really looking forward to seeing where this takes you all. But thank you so much on behalf of parents and students and all of us. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you. I do want to say, the hard work at the campus level of our principals and what they lead for every one of these campus plans, in addition to the district team that pours in, and then, of course, our entire superintendent leadership team, there's a lot of hours that go into this, but this is truly a team effort, and we have an amazing team that is focused on students and support for our teachers. So we do really appreciate the recognition.
It's a good mapping for our kids and parents, too. You want to know what the campus is doing, they're the, look at their district improvement plans or their campus improvement plans. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Board, this item is marked for possible action. Does the board wish to take any action? Ms. Barnes?
I move that we approve the CFP ISD District and Campus Improvement Plans as presented.
I have a motion from Ms. Barnes. Do I have a second? Mr. Gilmore? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. With a vote of six to zero, the motion passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next item is 6E. Consider approve all matters related to the nomination of candidates for the Denton, Denton Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. I, I'll say it. Yes, Mr. Gilmore?
I get to nominate someone, right?
Yes, you may.
All right. So the poor guy got short into the stick last year because he, the board nominated him, and Mr. Mike Henifer, I would like to nominate him to continue doing his work there.
Excellent. Mr. Mike Henifer's right here, the handsome man in the gray suit. Excellent. Mr. Mike Henifer is right here, the handsome man in the gray suit in the front. I have a motion from Mr. Gilmore. Do I have a second? Mrs. Benavides is our second. All those in favor? With a vote of six to zero, thank you very much. The motion passes. Thank you for your The next item is 6F. Consider or approve all matters related to the nomination of candidates for the Dallas Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. Board members, do you have any comments or questions? Board members, do we have a nominee for the Dallas Central Appraisal District? Hearing none, the board, this item is marked for possible action. Does the board wish to take any action? For the record, let the record show that the item 6E, titled "Consider or approve all matters related to the nomination of candidates for the Dallas Central Appraisal District Board of Directors," had no action taken. The next item is item seven. Closed meeting as authorized under Texas Government Code, including but not limited to Section 551.071, consultation with the district's legal counsel regarding methods of electing members in the Board of Trustees, closed session requirements and legislative updates, and 551.076, security devices. The next agenda item... Oh, moving forward. Oh, item 7A, Discuss Intruder Detection Audit Findings Report, and item 7B, consultation with district's legal counsel regarding methods of electing members on the Board of Trustees. The board will now move into closed session. Audience members, you are welcome to remain in the boardroom as the board members recess and move into the conference room for deliberations. The time is now 8:32 PM.
The board will move on to the next agenda item, number nine, comments from the board members regarding posted agenda items. Board members, do you have any comments you wish to make at this time related to the posted agenda? Ladies and gentlemen, we have reached the end of our agenda and we are adjourned at 9:35 PM. Thank you very much everyone.